Okay, Daniel, you're going to be our commissioner tonight.
Oh, am I? Okay. Oh, yes, Brock's not here. Okay. Right. Good evening. I'm going to call to order the meeting regularly scheduled meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission for tonight, Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. And could we get the, could we get the roll call, please?
Okay, I'm going to call Rolf on my screen from top to bottom. Commissioner Chalmers.
Yes, present.
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
And Vice Chair Councillor.
Present.
Okay, and for the record, our our actual Chairman Towar and our Vice Chair Wagstaff are unable to be at the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. So at this early point in in the meeting, we're going to invite public comments on matters that are specifically not on the agenda. If you have comments on matters which are on the agenda, we can take them when those agenda items come up. So if there's anybody there who does wish to speak at this time, could you please signal by raising your hand and Aaron will call on you? So hearing.
Let me just check, Aaron, is there, do we have audience?
We have quite a few attendees. I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Aaron. So with that, could we get the planning director's report, please?
Okay, thank you, Chairman and members of the Commission. Just a few items to comment on. One is we continue to be pretty busy in the building department. Despite the COVID conditions and COVID situation, we actually just last week hit our number of 1,000 permits issued, which is slightly below pace from last year, where we went about 1,300 permits issued for the year. But last year was a record-setting year in numbers of permits, so we're, we're still on a pretty good pace, at least in terms of permits, and a lot of these, we are, again, we continue to get a lot of upgrades to heating, solar, battery backups and occasional occasional backup generators, excuse me. And so again, we're, we've been really making do. It's very challenging. We had been preparing to open the city to having appointments. Just very select appointments for items that would make sense for pickup or drop off of certain permits, potentially appointments for planners to meet with applicants in pre-application meetings. If they so desired, the, we've been doing a lot of this through phone calls, some emails, some PDFs through email, and occasionally Zoom meetings like these. But we did, we were prepared to be able to have public come in on appointment-only basis, on very limited basis. But however, with the recent change of the Marin County condition to back to red and the recent orders of the Health Officer, higher concern with growing numbers of COVID cases. We were just beginning that program and then withdrawn it back, so we're really back to keeping, not having public accessibility, managing all of our communications through pickup and drop-off mail and deliveries and through email and phone calls and online communications. We are also working to kind of get back, staff back to working as remotely as possible, staggering hours as well to minimize potential COVID transfer or contagion in City Hall. We know it's a serious concern at this time for both the city operations and for the public. And hopefully, you know, in the next few months, we'll begin to see, get through this sort of hard, very difficult phase in the winter time and hopefully see some relief as we come into the spring and summer with treatments and vaccines, but for now, we do anticipate remaining closed likely through the course of the winter time. And with that, another thing I didn't want to mention to the, to the Commission, we are going to be looking at at staff level is not necessarily restricting, right now, the Commission meets twice a month, the second and the fourth Tuesday. But we're going to work to try to consolidate public hearings where possible and potentially cancel meetings or just conduct very light business and try to focus public hearing projects into one meeting a month, if possible. There's just our efficiencies in those operations and trying to consolidate those where possible. With our limited staff and the resources, it's a challenge to keep up the constant two-week routine of notices and reports and agendas. And ultimately, the workload doesn't change. We're going to manage what comes in, but there are efficiencies to doing these more concentrated, consolidated hearings. And with that, I would note that it appears likely that we do not have items for our next agenda, at least not fresh items, depending on what transfers over from this meeting. We do have our second meeting in December would be, you know, our next meeting is December 8th. And our next meeting before that, after that, would be the fourth Tuesday is the 22nd. That's the week before the Christmas holiday. So we'll be looking at what the demand is for hearings, items, and whether or not to schedule for that. I will be in contact with the planning commissioners about that or potentially setting a special meeting on the 15th, kind of split the difference, depending on what workload we have and what we need to do to maintain our Permit Streamlining Act compliance. Other than that, we are about to update, we've been working on getting the general plan draft to be ADA compliant, doing some edits. We're going to have that up on a, and the website updated next week and be scheduling a scoping meeting and releasing the NOP in early December. So stay tuned for that. We're a little behind on it, but we'll get, get that out right after the Thanksgiving holiday. With that, I should also note, City Hall typically is closed between the Christmas and New Year's holiday days. We'll continue to do that. Of course, City Hall is closed, but in terms of operations, we continue to operate both part-time in City Hall and through remote hours. But we will be closing a lot of the cities, the city's office availability during that period between the 20, that last week of December into January 1st. So any questions of me or any other questions of staff? Daniel, you have your sound off, so.
Do any of the, do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for Neil?
No. Not at this time, no.
Okay, well, thank you. Neil, is a prospect of consolidating the December meeting to the 15th, is that a fairly good prospect?
Well, I think that's a possibility. We're going to look at what we have coming in in terms of planning applications. We had, we don't have a whole lot, and then some depends on what gets done this evening as well and whether things can turn over and be ready for that meeting. The, the one challenge of always trying to anticipate what's coming up on the next meeting is the ability for a project to be, usually when there's revisions, there's kind of a hurried timeframe to be able to review it, determine that it's, that it's adequate and ripe for hearing, and then to be able to provide the adequate notice for that hearing, which usually takes about 15, you know, 15 to 11 days in advance to prepare a full 10-day notice. So there's a lot of, there's, there's usually a lot of lead time kind of needed, and right now, we don't have projects. But we do want to make sure, the other thing we want to do is make sure we're, we're getting projects done as they come in and not allowing things to build up. Often, sometimes we'll find projects kind of come in waves and then suddenly you have four or five really big projects that are all getting complete at the same time and trying to get to hearing and it's really, it's really good to try to take care of business as it comes, because as I said, ultimately, you have to do it. So if you put things off, they tend to build up. So well, we'll keep, we'll keep you apprised of the meeting dates. Probably in December, either by tomorrow or first thing next week, for sure. We'll have to put out notices, so we'll know if we've got a hearing in that on the December 8th by the end of this evening or tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, we are going to move on to the consent calendar, since we apparently have a substantial audience tonight of quick explanation. The consent calendar comprises items which the staff has tagged as, you know, particularly non-controversial and likely to attract the, the approval for their findings by, by the Commission. You're obviating the need for a complete oral presentation and hearing. So with that, and there's, there's a single item that consent calendar this evening. So with that, I'm going to ask first my fellow commissioners, if, if either of you, I think there are only two of you tonight, wish to remove this item from the consent calendar.
To remove it as in just approve it or?
Oh, no, if we removed it, we would actually, we would actually install it as a full, a full-blown business item.
No.
Okay, and Natasha, same for you?
No, I mean, I think that's not necessary.
Okay, thank you. And if there, is there anyone else present this evening that would wish to have this item removed from the consent calendar and and put down as a, as a business item? So maybe Aaron, if you can see if anybody's raised their hand?
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, so with that, thank you. So with that, could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar? And again, the single item tonight is design review. There's a, there's an exception and fence height exception, 20-29 relative to 99 Dartmouth Drive. So could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
And make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
And I can second.
That's fortunate. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So to note, there were three ayes and two absences, those of Chair Towar and and Brock and Vice Chair Wagstaff. Okay. Moving right along, so the first item after the consent calendar is design review floor area ratio and variance 20-27 for Three Garden Way here in Larkspur. Could we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Commissioner. The applicants are, Three Garden Way are requesting the following permits for a design review of additions. Floor area ratio exception to increase the existing home from 2,033 square feet and a .39 FAR to 2,575 square feet and a .49 FAR where .40 FAR is permitted. A variance to allow a new covered entry in the required street-side yard setback and a variance to allow a new upper-level balcony and the required rear yard setback. And also a fence height exception to plant a fern pine shrub row along the northerly property line to provide as a privacy screening between three and five garden ways. The subject site is a flat 5,204 square foot parcel with an average grade of 2%. It's located in the Heather Gardens neighborhood. The site is improved with an existing 2,033 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a one-car garage. An additional guest parking space is provided on the existing driveway. The existing residential structure complies with floor area, lot coverage and height limits, but is non-conforming with regard to onsite parking with two onsite spaces parked in tandem, as well as rear and street side yard setbacks. The home is situated on a corner lot with William Ave to the south and Gardenway to the east. By definition, the Gardenway East frontage is the front yard and the William Ave South Street frontage is the street-side yard. There's an existing main entry door and small porch at the south frontage, as well as a secondary entry door on the east frontage. There's an existing driveway and garage are accessed from William Ave. As the proposed project has currently improved, the upper floor of the existing residence maintains a ceiling height of less than seven feet and is considered to be attic storage and not habitable space. Due to the low interior ceiling height, it is currently not included in the floor area for the site. The applicants are proposing to remove the interior drop ceiling in the upper-level attic space to provide code-compliant ceiling heights of seven feet and to convert this area to habitable space. The space must now be added into the floor area where it was previously exempt. As proposed, this would add approximately 542 square feet, resulting in a total floor area of 2,575 square feet and a .49 FAR where 2,082 square feet and a .40 FAR is permitted by code. The majority of the second-floor expansion will be accomplished with only a small alteration of the existing roof and no increase in roof height. The one roof alteration is the raising of a small diagonal roof projection located on the north elevation. The elevation of this projection will be increased by approximately three feet to match and tie into the existing roof line. This change can be seen on the existing and proposed north and west elevation sheets E2, A3, and A4. The highest ridge of the home will remain unchanged at 21 feet 2 inches. Additionally, existing dormers which face the William Ave frontage are proposed to be removed and replaced with skylights. Additional improvements include new windows at the upper level in the northerly and westerly walls, a new second-floor deck off the west side with a six-foot, six-inch setback where nine feet is required and a removal of existing roof dormers on the south elevation and installation of the skylights. Removal of the existing south-facing porch roof and entry and installation of a new gable roof, front-entry porch and front door and installation of a four-panel sliding door at the east elevation fronting Gardenway. Although not required, the applicants have also proposed to widen the existing single-car driveway to accommodate two parking spaces side by side. This will increase onsite parking from two to three spaces. As the proposed improvements are almost entirely within the existing footprint, only the proposed second-floor deck would increase the lot coverage from 2,033 square feet to 2,080 square feet or 2,082 square feet are allowed by code. In addition, the applicants have also proposed to plant a fern pine hedgerow along the north lot line to mitigate privacy concerns expressed by the owners of Five Garden Way due to the proposed conversion of the upper-story attic to habitable, habitable space, sorry. The Commission should note that the existing front and street-side fence and hedgerow that extend out to the edge of Gardenway and William Ave are well into the unimproved portion of the public right-of-way. The Department of Public Works has required the applicants to relocate the fence and hedgerow five feet back from the curb to improve public safety and and for, and room for maintenance. In addition, the existing hedgerow is non-code compliant with regard to fence height limits in the front yard. And if applicants choose to replant a shrub row behind the relocated fence, staff has included a condition of approval requiring selected plants should be low-growing, no taller than 42 inches, unless a fence height exception permit is applied for and approved. As proposed, the new additions and exterior remodeling of the residence would modestly update the the style of the exterior to a more contemporary architectural appearance. The exterior siding would remain painted gray and the gabled roof line of the proposed entry porch would match the existing architecture. Generally, staff finds the proposed improvements of the residence to be minimal and consistent with the criteria for approval of applications. The floor area expansion would be created almost entirely within the existing structure and does not result in an increase in the existing building height and is roughly 18 feet from the northerly property line. Further, the proposed design would only minimally add to the existing building footprint for the addition of a second-floor deck. New windows are proposed at the upper level which face toward Five Garden Way to the north and maintain distances of 18 feet and five feet 1 inch from the northerly property line. The new proposed windows that are closest at five feet 1 inch to the northerly property line would be where there's a proposed new stairway and bathroom, which are not areas where the, where residents are likely to spend much time. The proposed windows which face west look toward the neighbor's driveway at 334 William Ave and maintain a 32-foot distance to the property line. The proposed French doors of the upper-level deck are 12 feet and the deck itself maintains a six-foot, six-inch distance to the westerly lot line. These areas also primarily look toward the adjacent driveway. Based on these factors, the proposed new residence would not result in a significant or unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, solar access, and prominent scenic views from adjacent properties. The matching gable roof and low profile of the proposed entry porch, when viewed from the street, minimizes the perception of excessive bulk. The proposed entry addition is single-story and extends the existing entry only minimally toward the William Ave frontage. The other addition is at the rear of the house and is proposed to raise a small section of the second floor up approximately three feet to match the existing roof line. The majority of the proposed modifications are contained within the existing building envelope and footprint and would not increase existing bulk or massing of the structure. Additionally, the removal of the existing dormers to be replaced with skylights reduces the bulk as viewed from William Ave. The proposed minor exterior alterations would combine in an attractive and visually cohesive manner and complement the site, the adjacent residences and surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has employed mass-reducing techniques by maintaining the existing building foot, volume and footprint and height so that the additional floor area is mitigated. The proposed project is primarily limited to interior remodeling of the upper level to convert existing storage and attic space, which currently has a six-foot, four-inch ceiling height to habitable space with, as proposed, with a seven-foot ceiling height. The floor area ratio exception is required as the new ceiling height requires the upper level to be included as floor area. The proposed project is contained within the existing buildings, building envelope and would not alter the scale or result in a home that overbuilds the lot. The floor area ratio exception is consistent with similar floor area exceptions granted to properties within 300 feet of the home as viewed on the attached FAR survey. With regard to the street-side yard variance, the proposed project requests a variance to allow construction of a slightly larger gable roof, front front entry at the William Ave frontage to replace an existing front-entry porch. The existing southerly wall of the home and entry porch currently encroach in the required 10-foot street yard setback. However, as viewed from William Ave, the setback from the roadway is much larger due to an additional 28 feet of an improved William Ave right-of-way, which has been incorporated into the front yard. This additional area, although not part of the property, meets and exceeds the intent of the setback regulations. The proposed project removes and reconstructs the existing entry covering in the same location with an appropriately-designed entry covering that matches the existing architecture and provides a more visually appealing design as viewed from William Ave. Due to the small size and narrow width of the lot and expansive, unimproved right-of-way fronting the parcel, strict application of this title would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning class, classification. With regard to the rear yard variance, the proposed project includes a variance to the rear yard setback to allow a new upper-level deck off the guest room at the westerly side of the home. The existing westerly side encroaches into the required 15-foot setback and currently maintains a setback ranging from eight to 13 feet due to the angle of the lot line. Attached decks are allowed to encroach up to six feet into the 15-foot rear yard setback, meaning that not, it should be nine feet from the lot line without a variance. The proposed deck would only provide six feet 6 inches for a setback at its closest point to the rear property line. While the deck is relatively modest in size and primarily faces the driveway of their westerly neighbor at 334 William Ave, second-floor decks can be imposing by allowing less restricted views into the surrounding property. Although the lot is small, it does benefit from expansive use of the public right-of-way and is provided with a modest rear yard. Therefore, staff questions whether the unusual or physical limitations associated with this property would be to support the additional approachment into the existing non-conforming setback. Staff notes that the reduction of two to three feet would comply with the nine-foot setback and a variance would not be required. This would still permit a small balcony-sized deck. Staff recommends the Commission to determine if there's sufficient physical constraints associated with this lot and the existing development to support the variance to the rear yard setback for the proposed second-floor deck. As staff is supportive of the project otherwise, staff has prepared findings for approval of the variance. If the Commission determines the variance would be a grant of special privilege, it is recommended that, that the Commission request the applicant to modify the proposed deck to meet the setback and withdraw the variance request. For the, with regard to the fence height exception, the proposed project requests a fence height exception to plant a row of fern pine along the northerly property line to act as a privacy screening between the three and five garden way properties. Fern pine have maturity height of 12 feet to 15 feet and will be planted adjacent to an existing seven-foot wood fence, six feet of solid wood fence with one foot of lattice topping that currently separates the two lot. The proposed row of plantings would be behind the home and not viewable from either street frontage and will not impair sightlines or pedestrians or traffic from vehicles entering or exiting the subject site. Additionally, based on its limited, on its limited placement, the proposed fence height exception will not impair the access to light and air of structures on the subject property and adjacent properties. Due to the placement of the shrub row, the orientation of surrounding homes and flat terrain, the fence height exception will not block significant views from structures and outdoor areas on neighborhood properties. So staff recommends that the planning commission determine if the application 2027 may be approved as proposed. That concludes my staff report and I'm open to take any questions at this time.
Thanks, thank you very much, Aaron. Do we have any questions from, from the Commission? So hearing, I've got two small clarifications, Aaron. One, so for the, the, the shrub row along, I guess it would be Long Garden Way. If the applicant wanted to preserve that, that kind of shrubbery, that would, we would require a separate fence height exception for that area, is that correct?
In the front, so in the front yard, there's shrub row currently fronts William Ave and, and Gardenway. They would need a, a fence height, a separate fence height exception to maintain that. But the, actually, the Department of Public Works as a condition of approval has required them to move the, the existing front shrub row and there's actually a fence under it that you can't really see if you visit the site. But the Department of Public Works is requiring that they move the, move the shrub row and fence back five feet from the street. It actually goes, extends all the way out to the street. So they would have to, you know, move it anyway.
They would have to move it if, and if they, if they, if they planted anything that was going to grow beyond the 42 inches, then we'd need a separate fence height exception.
Correct, yes.
And my, my other clarification has the kind of window which is facing Five Garden Way, so the, the windows would be facing facing north. Do we know what kind, especially above the, above the stairway and I guess in the, in the proposed bathroom? Do we know what kind of windows those are? Are those, is there any opaqueness to those windows? Are they frosted? Do we know?
I, I don't believe that they're frosted. The, I believe the intention of the applicant to provide privacy was the fern, the proposed fern pine. But the, the architects are on the line and we can, you know, confirm with them.
Okay.
But I don't recall, you know, discussing it being frosted.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to to give their presentation if they so wish.
Okay, the applicant's representative did email me this, this morning, Chris Skelton, so I'm going to give Chris the opportunity to unmute himself. Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself at this time and you could turn on your webcam as well.
Good evening. You're with me one second while I set up the share screen here.
Chris, I actually have the presentation ready if you'd like for me to.
I, I made one small adjustment if possible. I prefer to share from, from my screen if it's okay.
Okay, go for it. I'll stop sharing.
Excellent. I'm sorry, I just got a kickback that the host needs to authorize it.
Okay, you should be able to share at this time. Okay, you should be able to share at this time. Let me know if that works.
Excellent. Can you see the, uh, the image here?
Yeah, come through.
Excellent. Well, first off, thank you very much, Aaron, uh, for the comprehensive, uh, staff report as well as your written staff report. Um, very much appreciate it. And thank you to the commissioners, especially on the eve of the holiday, for your time and effort in participating in the public hearing process. Uh, as Aaron mentioned, my name is Chris Skelton. I'm serving as the project manager for, um, Aaron and Brennan uh, for their home at Three Garden Way. And both Ed and Richard of Pacific Design Group who have, uh, I think kind of masterfully accommodated certain programming and efficiencies through their design are also on the line if there are specific technical questions afterwards. And if it's okay, Aaron, I'd like to, to reserve a minute or two at the end in case, uh, responses to any public comments. So with that, uh, I won't delve into the same great level of detail that Aaron shared with you, but I do want to take a quick high level of the project background. As Aaron mentioned, you know, this is primarily an interior, interior remodel. Uh, it is preserving the integrity of the home and retaining all the height, bulk and mass characteristics of the existing conditions. Um, it, in essence, it's a remodel, interior remodel to improve circulation and efficiencies. One of the factors and I think ideals that a lot of municipalities look to, uh, especially these days are green building design and, uh, a terrific architect once shared with me that the greenest way to build is by retaining the existing and reusing it. And that's exactly what, uh, Pacific Design Group has done on behalf of Brennan and Aaron. Um, and then Aaron, uh, Aaron, uh, from staff also mentioned that there's an addition of an enclosed entry sort of covered area, uh, to accommodate sort of weather protection as well as the balcony on the west side and then supplemental landscape vegetation plan, which I want to get into a little bit detail, uh, further in the application. So one technical aspect that I want to raise for the commission as you consider the, the deliberative process is I guess kind of whether or not an F A R exception actually is necessary. As Aaron has pointed out in the staff report, the findings I think can readily be made based on the F A R table that was provided. But I want to share with you just a quick sort of, uh, visual overview of, um, uh, an application that you may look to. The municipal code says that attic spaces and any unenclosed space with a seven foot or greater ceiling shall count towards F A R. And I would suggest that that space already exists based on this, um, uh, based on this cross section of the existing conditions. And in particular, there's a false drop ceiling in that attic space. So technically, I think the seven foot area already, uh, is there. Uh, and again, the, the F A R chart reveals that this is relatively consistent with the overall neighborhood. But it's another way of evaluating, um, that entitlement. And again, that's that sort of three dimensional space beyond the false drop ceiling that already exists. When you add that in with the six plus foot ceiling height as is, there's definitely an excess of seven feet. Here's a diagram of the upper floor plan. And the floor plan itself is not changing, but the utility is being improved. Uh, namely, the laundry room and the stairwell in the lower level are being flipped to add efficiencies. Um, I think perhaps, uh, most important, especially in light of, in light of COVID, uh, there's an office use that's being created, um, for home, work from home conditions. They're creating a personalized play space for the children and then adding a bathroom as well as windows for natural light. So the, the northern window concern, uh, and, uh, there have been some communications with the neighbor at Five Garden Way and there have been a number of efforts that have been undertaken to adjust and modify the design since its initial, initial iteration to accommodate this. Uh, one of the primary points of concern was the window in the stairwell depicted in, in yellow here. That window originally was, uh, frankly, uh, full, full scale from floor to ceiling to allow an abundance of light to traverse not only the upper floor but also the lower floor in that stairwell. You'll see that that windowsill was raised significantly, uh, and it now sits over nine feet above the landing at that stairwell. And then it also is depicted over ten feet away from the finished floor of that second floor such that when a person of approximately six feet is standing at that area, there's no physical possible way for that person to look down and out towards the property at Five Garden Way into, um, some of the more sensitive private spaces. Here, here's sort of a summary of the northern facing windows in a slightly more enlarged diagram for you to see. Um, I know Aaron did touch on them. First is the bathroom window and i- in response to uh, one of the commissioner questions earlier, yes, this bathroom window is intended to be frosted. Um, and Brennan and Aaron very much appreciate, uh, you know, the, the privacy aspects of personal spaces, the bathroom being one of them. And so there is absolutely an intention to, to frost and apply privacy glass to that, to that area. I already mentioned the modifications to the stairwell window. One additional modification that wasn't necessarily, uh, readily identifiable from the cross section but is in the plan view is that this window was actually shifted off center. And that's again, uh, shifted to the west, to the left on the page to further eliminate any perceived, um, line of sight concerns. And then finally, are the windows, uh, at the office location, which are located just under twenty-five feet away from the residence on Five, uh, Garden Way and outside of the building footprint of that residence as well. Uh, these, in case you didn't have an opportunity, uh, to visit the property, um, and especially in light of COVID conditions and recent weather changes. Uh, this is a picture of the rear yard with Three Garden Way on the right and Five Garden Way on the left. Another picture here. Now, I, I want to show you kind of what some of the existing screening is and, and one minor correction to the staff report. The existing fence as measured from Three Garden Way is an eight foot fence, seven feet of solid with one foot of lattice at the top, uh, depicted in close up here. And then on top of that, you'll see there's a, a fairly robust, um, uh, landscaping that certainly i- includes sort of climbing elements, uh, that seems to enjoy the natural light right back there. It is estimated at, at just about eighteen inches, so in total, just under ten feet of, of screening. As I mentioned earlier, the office windows depicted on the western portion of the property are, are outside of kind of the building envelope. If you were to align them with, um, with the residence at Five, uh, Garden Way. And then the playroom window, um, which already exists is oriented sort of in the northwestern direction, uh, and so should not, uh, oh, I otherwise provide any privacy concern. As a point of reference here, I have two photos stacked on top of each other. The upper photo is the view out of that playroom window, um, in a standing form and the lower pho- photo is in a sitting form. And again, you'll see what basically the existing conditions are. So landscaping is definitely one of the tools that was utilized in, um, mitigating the, uh, the perceived privacy concerns. Uh, since the plan was submitted, uh, there was a public comment, uh, submitted by the neighbor at Five Garden Way expressing concern about the potential adverse impact of the podicarpus hedge uh, in between the two properties, uh, specifically as it relates to fire insurance, which, uh, I understand is becoming more and more of a problem in, uh, Marin in general. Uh, as a result of that concern, uh, as a condition of approval, I, I think it makes sense to eliminate the four eastern podicarpus plantings. Um, this would ensure the, uh, at least the five foot buffer from, uh, from that vegetative screening towards the neighbor at, at Five Garden Way. Um, we did look at a couple other alternatives, potentially alternating which side of the fence, um, the podicarpus, uh, plantings could be arranged. Unfortunately, I understand that there are, um, subgrade irrigation improvements that prevent, um, really meaningful planting on the other side on Five Garden. Um, but I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, I'll reference, uh, in a minute on another slide. I do think there's actually a, a different, um, privacy screening proposal that may be the superior alternative, um, subject to the condition of approval by, uh, by the commission. Um, lastly, I want to point out this deck on the western, uh, western facade of Three Garden and, uh, understand the variance condition. I think it's, it, it's worthwhile to note that, uh, Mr. and Mrs. White, the owners of three, three, four William, uh, did submit a letter of support for the applicant. Um, and this does orient towards Mount Tam and, uh, and so I think there's, uh, the deck was designed to be minimally, uh, minimal in scale while still providing some substantive benefit to, um, to the residents. So going back to the privacy, uh, screening, uh, I, I understand that these are the two primary, uh, points of concern because they're part of the master bathroom, um, for Five, uh, Garden Way. And I want to share with you, actually, this is a photo of my own home and, and a bathroom in my home. Um, and this is conceptually, uh, what Brennan and Aaron would plan to do in the up, upper floor bathroom for their residence. And this is an easy application. It's something that I can, that I picked up at Home Depot or you can get at Ace. It's super easy to apply and you can see it's quite effective because, you know, I, I was still able to preserve at least blue sky and natural light while also affording meaningful privacy, uh, in certain areas of sensitivity. So going back to the landscaping, uh, and this is a, a, a point of clarification and I, I know that commissioners don't usually like audibles, uh, uh, at, at a hearing. And so please excuse me for this. Um, but I, based on, uh, the owner at Five Garden Way's September second letter, which identified an opportunity for a three foot, uh, lattice, which is depicted here in green. I, I think the three foot lattice may provide a more substantive and meaningful privacy screening, um, instead of the podicarpus. Um, the podicarpus were, uh, after submittal, later identified as a concern related to fire insurance. I know Brennan and Aaron do not want at all to be the cause of somebody losing their fire insurance. Um, absolutely, it's not, not the kind of neighbors that they want to be. And so, uh, as, as identified in the prior slide, this would result in a seven foot solid wood with four foot of total lattice. And presumably this, this, uh, existing vegetation could be retained and it does appear to enjoy climbing. So it would naturally make for a green screen to soften the overall appearance of, uh, of the lattice work. And then that lattice work could be carried all the way along that northern property line, uh, essentially from the edge of building as depicted on the right side of this photo to, to the, um, property line in lieu of the podicarpus. And, uh, yeah, so I, I, I think that that's probably the preferred approach. I, I, I expected you'll probably hear from, uh, the neighbor at Five Garden Way and hopefully that's still an, an acceptable alternative, especially if the podicarpus would be eliminated from this area. It feels like there may still be some, uh, lingering concern over, over the screening that could be accomplished through this alternative design. And finally, I want to share with you just a couple of images in case you haven't had an opportunity to walk the neighborhood of other similarly situated properties, um, i- in, in this community. Uh, notably paying attention to the second floor, uh, windows, um, and how they're situated oriented. The organic development of screening or privacy blinds or, um, shades that naturally, uh, sort of accrue over time throughout the properties. And here are just a couple extra. So i- in conclusion, uh, Aaron Matthews has done an excellent job in preparing the staff report and, uh, I think giving the commissioners the tools necessary to make the findings, um, which are supported by the facts and the, uh, excellent design by Pacific Design Group for all of the different entitlements that are sought. Uh, and, and in summary, you know, I think this is an ideal application because they're working within the framework of their existing structure and frankly making it uh, more accommodating for their growing family, um, adapting to current and anticipated future needs through home office and, and work from home accommodations. Um, and then not to mention the abundance of neighborhood support that's been submitted and included in the staff packet. So with that, uh, we'll sort of finish our presentation and if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to field them or defer it over to Ed and Richard of Pacific Design Group.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Chris. Um, so, uh, fellow commissioners, do you have any questions for, um, for Chris?
I, I just had one question about the deck. Um, the, the issue with the variance, uh, required to have the deck be as far out. Have you considered doing more of like, uh, you know, you know, Romeo and Juliet style deck of a little bit shorter to avoid the variance on that side?
Y- yes, uh, the, the Romeo Juliet style deck was, uh, studied and, uh, uh, unfortunately, it, it became somewhat of a, a design difficulty. Um, rearranging the, the doors, the way that they're orienting and adding functionality. Um, that deck in, it does orient directly towards Mount Tam.
Yeah.
It's, um, it's only six feet really in depth. Uh, it's kind of the minimal design, uh, deck and I, I can share that because I have a five foot deck at my own home. And boy, it's like just too small to really do anything on, um, and so.
You park two chairs on it and a little table, it's about it.
And it, it's that French sort of, um, bistro type, type deal. And even that on my, on my deck, it's, it's really challenging when you go in and out of the door. Um, so this was the minimally, I, I think, intrusive design that still accommodated some functionality. And because three, three, four, uh, was the property adjacent to it and the relationship of that, of those two properties and their support of it, um, we thought that it was, it was, uh, fitting and appropriate here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions, Natasha?
You know, the only clarification I had was really an architect question on the plans. Um, I don't know if Chris Skelton can answer that question or someone else can. Um, it was A four, page A four. I just wanted to make sure I understood the windows there. So, um.
Go, yeah, go ahead. I'm, uh, just.
Yeah, so that is four windows along the top on the north side. The two little windows, which I think are the bath and the stairs, and then the two large windows. And those two large windows, are those the two which are in this office that you've talked about?
No, uh, the, the two in the middle, I'm sorry, the, the, those two right there that Aaron has highlighted. Uh, those are actually the, I guess, the playroom windows that I provided the existing photo, um, from sitting and standing. Those are oriented in the northwesterly direction and, uh, does not, uh, yeah, they, it, it doesn't line up at all with the building improvements at, um, Five Garden.
That's the one, so that one that the, um, we're pointing at right now, that's the one that's at a slant.
Yes.
Face, right. And then the one to the right.
Yep.
That is the office window, but it's setback, you said twenty something feet.
Yeah, so it's almost twenty feet from there to the property line. And then Five Garden is another approximately five feet beyond the property line. So it's just under twenty-five feet away. And then I think as, as you saw in the, in the power slide, when you line up that window with the property improvements, uh, at five, it, it actually doesn't line up with the, um, if you, if that hand were to go straight up, it doesn't line up with the building at five because it's so far to the west. If, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Yeah, no, that's helpful. Thank you, thank you.
Yep. And, and then lastly, and I'm sorry to, to blabber it, although the landscape plan that was submitted included the podicarpus to go all the way to the edge of Three Garden Way. Like I said, in light of the concern, and, and I do think it's a, a very reasonable and, and, and sincere concern about fire insurance, because I've known many people that have gotten dropped from their coverage. You know, I, I think the, the lattice, the lattice proposal, which would be an additional three feet of lattice on top of the existing eight foot fence in total. So seven solid plus four lattice. I think that mi- I think that, that should address the, the general concerns. It nearly mimics the same contemplated height as the podicarpus hedge. Erin mentioned that the hedge is, in theory, a mature podicarpus hedge would be between twelve and fifteen feet. And so the three additional feet of lattice would reach a total height of eleven feet, which is, I think, comparable. And it wouldn't present the same fire risk for fire insurance purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. At this point, I would like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to raise their hand. And Erin can call on you.
We, we do have the architects and the homeowners on the, on call. Did, did you want to hear from them at this time?
Yeah, let's, let's start with them if we could.
Okay, I'm going to start with PDG, Pacific Design Group. So I'm going to allow to talk. You should be able to unmute yourself.
And, and if you could state your, your, your name and, and where you live. Prior to speaking.
This is Ed Blankenship with Pacific Design Group. I'm here with Richard Burling and we're the architects for this project. And I think Chris has done an excellent job of explaining it. This project has changed from the original design to attempt to accommodate the owner at Five Garden. I think that Erin and Brennan have done a wonderful job of allowing us to try to accommodate her needs for privacy. We totally understand that. But still allow us to be able to give Erin and Brennan the room functions and appropriate light and natural environment to be able to participate in their house. So we're, we're happy with the project and look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed. Now Erin, could you call on the next person who would wish to speak?
Okay, I'm going to call on Erin Riley, who's the homeowner. You should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Thank you. Welcome, Erin.
I'll see you then. Hi, just wanted, just, just wanted to say that we're really excited about this project. And we are looking forward to continuing to work with our neighbor to make sure that, that this project works for all of us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do have Linda Beck on the call, who is a homeowner of Five Garden Way. Linda, you should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Yes, thank you. And yes, I also wanted to say that Erin and Brennan are lovely people and I look forward to working with them as well. Before I give my side of, before I give my opinion, I'd like to ask the architect on the proposed extension of the lattice work, how is that less of a fire hazard than a green hedge? How is a fence? I'm just, I just don't know.
Do, do you want to complete your comments and then we can?
Oh, sure. Okay. Okay, yeah, so I was going to say, yeah, Erin and Brennan are lovely people. But unfortunately, the north-facing proposed windows, I do still feel negatively impacts my privacy as well as potentially adding an unwanted light at night into my master suite where I spend a lot of time and want the most privacy. I realize they want the, their largest upstairs north-facing playroom and guest room windows for light. And they are, as Architect mentioned, about twenty-five feet, he said, from my bedroom. The playroom, which is actually the biggest one, is three feet closer because of the angle. And as you can see from the drawings I sent in, they are very obvious from my bedroom. And the few whiffs from the jasmine don't provide any significant privacy. And I am frankly just unclear on the two west-facing stairwell windows. If you're looking out the playroom, it seems like you'd see my master bedroom. But I, you know, I'm not great at architectural plans, so I, it, it seems to me that way, but I don't know. So installing the hedge would give me privacy, but it seems suboptimal and a non-permanent solution, both because of the fire hazards I'm concerned about, as well as if Erin and Brennan ever move, it seems like the new owner would cut down the hedge for both fire and space issues. And I'm concerned that they would then occupy the upstairs now office guest suite as a master suite to take advantage of mountain views. And that would further impede on my privacy. For the lattice work, I'm, it's new to me, but I'm unclear how that would be less of a, a fire hazard. And in my own house, I will tell you, I also have a second-story office and guest room area, and it was remodeled about fifteen years. And the south-facing wall that faces Erin and Brennan's property, also about eighteen feet from our property line. So, you know, the twenty-five-ish feet from there walls has no windows. And so it allows them total privacy in the backyard. My windows in my office space are focused on the west, which gives me the light and the views. And my north-facing window in the same room that faces my other neighbor has a high sill base of five foot three inches. So again, it gives me some light but affords that neighbor privacy. So I was hopeful that the planning commission could readdress clear story or higher sill windows or fewer windows facing into my master suite. Or the architect's new suggestion of a opaque window at the bottom. But the clear window on the top would also work on the playroom and the office window. So then it wouldn't impact my privacy.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I guess, Erin, maybe I can start, you know, Erin, can I can ask you if you, if you have an answer to the, to the question about the, the fire, the relative fire resistance of a lattice work structure atop the fence rather than trees?
Actually, this is the first that I'm being presented with that option also. But to discuss the fern pine row, it was, these plans were sent to the Central Marin Fire District and the fire chief did, you know, view these plans and, and said that there were, you know, was no issue with the placement of the fern pine row. And that email is included in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
It's an attachment.
Thank you. And maybe, Ed, is this an issue that, Ed Blankenship, is this an issue that you've encountered before?
Okay, PD, Ed, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Our, I would say, first of all, that what we've run into is that leaves are generally considered more flammable issue than, than the wood structure. We really, we really haven't had an issue that the lattice was considered a fire issue. We've been able to construct them with fire retardant materials. I, I'm sure if that was an issue, we would come up with some form of a lattice that was not fire or was fire resistant. That would be the issue. Maybe it's a fiber submit lattice. We, we, we could come up with some kind of a, a fire resistant lattice. We do believe that the lattice might be the best approach. As the neighbor at Five Garden, Linda, had mentioned that, that the ability to grow a separate plant, it might die or somebody might cut it, it could go away, but the lattice would be much more permanent. And we also think that the vines that are growing there now look like they would be very hardy and green up that portion of the lattice. This would also allow both neighbors to have greater distance in side yard too, without having plants encroach into their, their narrow yard. So I'm not really clear on, on the fire issues between a lattice and a plant. That seems cutting it pretty close. That we do recognize that the fire issues are huge right now. Having spent last August in the dark, we are completely aware of it and sensitive to it. And I, I think that it would be real easy to construct a lattice out of some form of non-flammable material.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then we, we do have Chris Skelton with his hand raised.
Sure.
So Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thanks, Erin. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I just wanted to piggyback on what Ed was just speaking to. Unfortunately, we don't know what will or may cause a insurance carrier to drop a insured. And so when we saw the public comment about the concern over the proximity of the podicarpus hedge to the home at, at Five Garden Way, and keeping in mind that the podicarpus is even closer to the home at Three Garden Way, you know, we wanted to respond and be sensitive to that. As currently submitted and designed, the hedge goes all the way to basically the edge of building where the jog is at Three Garden Way. The, the two alternatives that I think are readily available, if the commission wants to take a different approach than what was designed, is we, we suggested dropping four of the podicarpus plants to reduce the run to the east. And then I think alternatively, we, we've outlined why a lattice may be the superior alternative to, to all of the designs. But certainly, like, we're not fire insurance experts and don't know what may or may cause, may or may not cause somebody to get dropped. So separately speaking, I want to speak really quickly to the, the concern about lights at, at night in particular, but also just privacy, privacy in general. The, as I depicted on the neighborhood sort of neighborhood photos, if you will, almost every single one of those photos included either shades or curtains or some other privacy screening for those second-story and most first-story windows. And I think it's natural and somewhat of an organic process, not something that needs to be conditioned by an approval for homeowners to install, like I said, shade screens or other blinds within their home to accomplish the, the privacy that they, they seek. And most certainly, I, I, I see in, in particular with that playroom and the office windows, that Erin and Brennan are, are going to install some sort of privacy curtain screen or other, other improvement in, inside. So I hope that although it, it may not give guaranteed certainty for the neighbor at Five Garden Way, security with the privacy, Erin and Brennan will certainly pick up their slack and, and take on the effort of securing that privacy for, for them. And then for, for the other reasons that were outlined in the presentation that I gave, I, I, I don't know if these areas are really significant privacy concerns that, like I said, rise to the level of any special conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Erin, does anyone else have their hand raised?
Linda does have her, her hand raised again.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, real quickly. So I appreciate that Erin and Brennan are going to put in drapes. But since I won't be able to tell from my end if they're open or closed, for me to retain privacy, that means mine would have to be closed all the time in my master suite. So I appreciate that, but that doesn't seem like a solution.
Okay, thank you for that, for that comment. Erin, does anyone else have their hand raised?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then I will, I will bring it back to, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. And if I might start with Natasha?
Yes, thanks, Daniel. So thank you, everybody, for, for providing comments and your participation in this. So here are my thoughts on this. So on the design review, I'm in agreement with the findings on that. So I have no issues with that at all. On the floor area ratio exception, I was initially concerned that that did seem a little high. But given there's no change to the massing and to the structure, I can accept the findings on that too. I think, and it is already interior, so there's no actual outside change on that. On the variances, I thought the, the side street yard setback had no issues whatsoever. In fact, it's a really nice design. The upper level balcony, I also had questioned if they wanted to maybe make the balcony smaller so they could avoid doing the variance. But I understand the issues that you're facing, that it would just be too small. And, and it seems like there are no objections from the neighbor either. So that's okay as well. So it just comes to the fence height exception. I do want to acknowledge the, the neighbor, and I know that she has concerns about privacy and the windows looking in. And I know, I read through the letter and, and I was very, very pleased to see Chris Skelton's presentation. It did seem to me that they had really looked at all her concerns and were trying to address them, each and every one of them. So I was really pleased to see the level of cooperation between the neighbors here. And I thought the presentation today was very, very helpful, so thank you for that. I just had one, I think, a lot of the, the issues that were raised in her letter seem to have been addressed. You know, she'd asked, so on the hedge, it seems like the, the neighbor at number five garden way had talked about the three-foot trellis on top of the fence. That seems to have been raised and agreed to. So that's something that maybe we could discuss as a commission. But that may be a potential solution here that would keep number five, the, number five occupant satisfied. And then it seems like on the windows, the two windows that have main concern are set back and are slanted in a different direction. One of them is slanted in a different direction. So maybe they're not as, as a concern as they would be if they were much closer. And I do want to just pose to the applicants whether they want to consider putting in the opaque bottom half on their side of their windows. So maybe that's something that would, would solve the problem. So those are my comments so far, Daniel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Natasha. Jeffrey?
Okay, so it's, I like it when Natasha goes first because I don't have to repeat things. I agree with everything Natasha said. I, I know this house quite well. One of the prior owners was a good friend of mine, so I've been in this house many times. And I think that the line of sight issues have been very well addressed by the designer, the architect. And Chris, I, I thought that obviously privacy coverings like drapes or blinds or things like that obviously would, would be put in. Although I can understand the concern about, you know, a, a future owner coming in and turning that into a master suite. But at the same time, I think that I was pretty convinced that the line of sight issues were addressed, that it's not really a problem. I do understand the light issue, and I think that that's where the, you know, light at night into her master bedroom is a concern. But I think that with neighborly cooperation, I think that can be addressed. And there's a lot, I used to live in, in Heather Gardens and there's a lot of houses there. Especially in the last twenty years, they've done a lot of second-story additions where these issues have, have really had to be addressed by many neighbors. And I think most of them, to most people's satisfaction, my understanding have been addressed. So I think that the trellis is a good idea. I think it's probably less flammable than the podicarpus, and I think it's a good solution. And I agree with the balcony. I, I think it's a Romeo Juliet balcony is not going to cut it. And that's such a nice view out to Mount Tam there, that it's a shame that not to be able to use it. So I'm, I'm in favor of approving the findings and approving the project.
Okay, thank you. So I get to go last tonight. What a delight. So yeah, I, I'm actually in, you know, in agreement with, with both of you. But I, you know, like, like Natasha, I do want to recognize Ms. Beck for, for her, for her comments. They, they were thoughtful and we, I think we're taking them into consideration. So I am, I'm, I am in agreement with, with what was said previously that, that the, the designers have taken great care to mitigate, to mitigate the privacy issues. And, and, and even to a, to a large extent, the, the light invasion, the light invasion. And even to a large extent, the light invasion, the light invasion issues. I myself, I live in a house with some light intrusion from the neighbors, but, you know, we've never really, we haven't allowed that to really alter, you know, whatever pleasure we take in our home. With regard to the fence height exception, yeah, I am in favor of it. I'd sort of be at pains to identify why the structure which is proposed would present a greater fire hazard than what is currently there. So I do think, for, you know, for one thing, the actual mass of material that will be present in that area will be less with the lattice work than it would be with the podicarpus. So I think that that is probably is a viable solution. I would, in fact, encourage the designers to, you know, go that extra mile and find some non-flammable or flame retardant materials with which to construct that lattice work. I think that would be helpful. You might as well, we might as well take a, you know, sort of a belt and suspenders approach to that. My one question would be a procedural one, which is, you know, given that the plans have been, the plans for the fence, for the part of the property facing number five garden way have now been somewhat altered, eliminating the podicarpus and putting in the lattice work, whether we could either construct a condition of approval that the, that fence, about the actual morphology of that fence, or whether, you know, something has to come back in conditions of approval and then be voted on subsequently by the commission. Neil, can you address that, or Erin?
This is Kristen, senior planner. Okay, I think Neil must be occupied at the moment. I just wanted to point something out that hasn't really been brought up by the applicants. If you wish to install three feet of lattice on top of this fence, it will require a building permit and some structural reconfiguration to meet minimum standards in the code in wind loads. So just keep in mind that this fence will have to undergo some substantial work to be able to just, you can't just tack three feet of lattice on and expect it to stay. It's going to have to be framed and new structural supports put in place in order to meet code. So just keep that in mind. They might undermine that existing vegetation that's on the fence in order to get this accomplished and then have to regrow it. So having said that, what was the question you wanted to answer again?
The question I wanted to answer was a procedural one. So Kent, from a planning perspective, you know, if we did get to an agreement amongst the commissioners, can we approve the project knowing that the proposed fence in that section of the property is different than what was actually proposed in the materials that we received? Or, you know, or does it have to come back, or do we have to continue this and have it come back with the actual plans for that fence area?
Well, the notice did include a maximum height of, I think Erin said 14, 15 feet. Is that correct?
Twelve to 15 feet for the fern pine, yes.
So, you know, the primary issue is the height, because that can shadow.
So for the rest of it, we could just pump that to the building department?
I think you can impose a condition of approval that says that they have to install a lattice top, apply for permits and install lattice top that would result in a maximum height. How tall do you want this? You want it to be cut off at a certain point, right?
Well, they're proposing 11 feet, so we, and previously, I think the proposal was 12 feet, so we can keep it at 12 feet. I would imagine.
Yeah, this is Neil. Sorry, I was present, it just took a bit to get my computer to react back to my, get my sound on. But yeah, I agree with Senior Planner Tyke's position. Essentially, it was noticed as a fence height exception, and this is kind of just changing a material, but keeping with the intent or the spirit of the request. But if you may want to go with whatever the parameters the applicants are proposing as being the max height is maybe what you want to impose as the specific height for the, as a condition of approval for modifying the project.
Okay, okay, all right. Fine, so with that, I'll ask one of my fellow commissioners if they would like to to make a motion and one that would include as a condition of approval, the submission of a plan for the back fence with the lattice work.
Your turn, Natasha.
Okay. All right, right. Stop me if I get this wrong. Okay, so hereby propose a motion to approve the RFA R F H E 2027 with a condition of approval with respect to the fence height exception. Then include, wait, now I need the guidance here. You're going to have to, this has the height of the 12-feet height, right? To include a three-foot lattice?
That's correct. Twelve-foot height, and with the understanding that that it will be submitted to, that what will be submitted to the building department for approval would be that three foot of lattice atop a solid fence with a total lot to exceed 12 feet.
There we go. Thank you.
Seconded it.
Okay.
That was easy.
Oh, yeah. You're going to have to go next, though, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, hearing noted, noting that Chair Towber and Vice Chair Wagstaff are absent this evening. Okay, and I also want to note for those present that there is a 10-day appeal period should somebody be dissatisfied with this decision. And that appeal would go to the City Council. Okay, thank you very much. We are going to, with that, move on to application 19-49, design review for aerial ratio variance, slope permits, heritage tree removal, and fence height exception. And this is all related to 203 Hawthorne Avenue. And could we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening again. So in this particular application, the subject site is a 6,128-square-foot flag lot, has an average grade of 30%, and it's located near the intersection of Willow and Hawthorne Avenues. The body of the lot is situated behind 201 Hawthorne Avenue in the parking in the access or up that little narrow corridor. The applicant's proposing to demolish all the existing improvements on the site, the primary house and the accessory structure, and construct a new approximately 1,800-square-foot, single-family home. The particular architectural style would be a modern farmhouse style of architecture. It would present a mix of horizontal and board and batten siding and painted Arctic white, gunmetal-colored clad windows and standing seam roofing. As designed, the proposed residence would generally comply with the zoning requirements, but it would exceed the permitted floor area ratio. To accomplish the design program, the plans also include grading of approximately 155 cubic yards, cut and fill, primarily in the main building footprint. Additional permits include the parking variance. Any new single-family home is required by code to provide four onsite spaces, one covered. In this case, due to that narrow accessway, they are proposing to improve the one-car parking that they have currently to provide two spaces in tandem. One space would also be a little narrow because it's confined. Right now, we require 12 feet minimum, and it's 10 feet. They also, we have included a heritage tree removal permit in this application due to the amount of substantial grading and pruning that would be required on two trees due to the project. The applicant has intended to follow his arborist recommendations and protect the trees as best as possible, but because of the substantial change in the conditions of both trees, the heritage tree removal permits are required. And last, we have a request for a fence height exception permit to install a six-foot wood fence on top of exist, or new retaining walls that are currently under construction along the perimeter, I think it's the south and the west property lines. The fence installed on top of these walls would range in height between eight to 12 feet. Yeah, about eight to 12 feet, maybe even a little more at the very far corner at the intersection of the westerly and southerly property lines. Since the staff report provided you with a pretty exhaustive discussion on all the permits and the issues, I'm going to just touch on things. And if you have any questions, or if I left something out you were interested in, feel free to ask me at the end of the report. First is the variance to parking. We have been supportive of this variance, just basically due to the configuration of this property. It's minimal street frontage, it's steep slope. It literally can't provide the four spaces in compliance with code. The fact that they're willing to improve it to two for a small three-bedroom home seems appropriate, and we believe we can make the variance findings for this, where this application to be approved. With regard to the slope use permit, the grading itself is actually quite minimal for most, considering what we see for most projects on these steep lots. It's been reviewed by our consulting geotechnical expert as well as the city engineer, and they have determined that the work that's proposed here can be done safely. And with regard to the fence height exception permit, this particular fence line is going to be screened pretty well from the roadway by existing development. The people who are primarily going to view this fence will be the down-hill neighbors who have not raised any objections to the application, and I think will benefit some from gaining some privacy between each other with the installation of the fence. Although it does look like it's pretty close to the back of 201 Hawthorne, I think that is. There aren't any real significant windows at the back of this home that it looks like it would overly shadow or impair light for. The primary viewing windows are out looking in the opposite directions. So we do believe we can make the findings for the fence height exception as well. So this leads me to the issues I raised in the staff report. First is the floor area ratio. Although the almost 1,800-square-foot home in the Point 29 FAR are not really unreasonable for the site of the neighborhood, we are concerned with the amount of bulk and mass the design presents on this really steep hillside. Currently, the findings encourage design techniques that minimize bulk and help to offset the additional square footage requested. And the design that you see here with the very tall elevation on the downhill side of the lot doesn't particularly meet that finding. The other issue that was raised was that the changing of the massing of the, from the existing home to this one has resulted in an impact on views from 207 Hawthorne Avenue, who has written you a letter and provided you with some diagrams. I'm sure you've all reviewed those. I will let, I believe they're here and they can speak for themselves. But the findings for a design review, as well as FAR, do encourage us to ensure that significant views and an unreasonable loss of significant views is not created due to new work and additions. So the commission should consider the neighbors' concerns and determine if this raises to a level of significance that should encourage some modification to the design to reduce those impacts. With regard to the heritage tree removal permits, there are two trees that could be impacted. The first is a coastal live oak that's located in the access corridor on the site. The impacts are largely due to grading for trenching of utilities and to install the new access stairway. Unfortunately, these impacts are going to be very unavoidable. They do need to improve their utility infrastructure and add new sanitary sewer. So the only way to get down to the roadway is through this access corridor and past the trees that are quite close to that stairway. They are indicating they will follow the arborist recommendations to try and preserve as much of the critical root zone of that tree as possible and ensure its survival. However, if the tree is not able to survive the work, we do recommend that the commission consider a condition of approval requiring replacement of this tree either in that corridor or somewhere on the site with a similar appropriate species like a coastal live oak. The second tree that's being impacted is an elm that's located on 207 Hawthorne Avenue next door, up off the rear corner of the proposed home. The elm is being impacted partially due to the grading plan and partially because the new massing of the home is so much taller that it requires a fairly substantial removal of limbs above it to get the 10 feet of clearance required by the fire department. We did identify in the staff report that the grading plan in that area would be very close to the tree trunk and is only being proposed in order to create a separate entryway into sort of a small basement workroom. It appears that as this is a new design, it would be easy enough to ask the applicant to eliminate grading in this area and not create that entryway, and perhaps reconsider the floor plan some to provide themselves a work plan, a workspace that would have its own independent entry and doesn't require excavation to the extent proposed currently. This would also, if they also could shift the home to the west some, that would also help eliminate some of the limb loss that the tree would suffer and better ensure its long-term survival. So with those things in mind, we determined that the slope use permit findings could not be made as proposed because the applicant hasn't adequately taken into account the environmental characteristics of the site and the adjacent properties, and would be essentially doing work that would very, it'd be very unlikely if the tree would survive. So for these reasons, we have not made you findings for approval for the slope use permit, for the heritage tree removal permit, and for the design review and the FAR exception permits. We recommend that you consider our concerns raised in the report and any other concerns raised by the neighbor, and determine if there are somewhat minor modifications in the program that could be considered by the applicant that would allow approval of the project. If you find that it would take much more substantive changes for you to make the findings and all the permits, then we recommend denial of the project. So the applicant can take their time to reconsider the design program and come back with a project that meets your concerns. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Do I have questions from my fellow commissioners for Kristen? No, I have one really minor clarification. With regard to the parking, Kristen, I know that one of the spaces is only 10 feet wide and the requirement is 12 feet. Just procedurally, can we nonetheless consider that second, the second space as an actual code compliant, well, for planning purposes, as a compliant parking space, even though it's not 12 feet wide?
Well, it is in our code to allow existing parking spaces of 10 feet in width to remain if they are non-conforming and, you know, have been built long ago. So it's, 10 feet is considered adequate for a small car to park there. It's up to the commission to determine if you'll accept that as an adequate parking space for a new single-family home.
Okay, all right.
That's what your variance is there for, to consider.
Thank you. So with that, I would like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to address the commission.
Okay, I'm going to let Chris Schrader talk first, the architect. Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hello. Chris Schrader, the project applicant and designer. Thank you for everyone's time for the holiday and for Kristen's work on the staff report. I'd like to start by noting, last week, we had requested a continuance based on concerns in the staff report after receiving it and a letter from 207 Hawthorne after the public hearing notice and after the project had been deemed complete. We requested a continuance as we thought we could address these concerns, but since revised drawings aren't permitted to be introduced during the meeting, we thought it would be best to submit the revisions for future review. However, since this request was denied a couple of days ago, and we're here anyways, we're willing to address the concerns verbally in hopes they can be deemed minor amendments as a conditions of approval. And on an approved project, if the commission deems this as an option and is willing to make a motion, we're really anxious to move into the building permit process. we're really anxious to move into the building permit process. It's been a long process, partially delayed by the street moratorium where we had to kind of divert all of our attention for almost six months. We were told that we wouldn't be able to do anything with the road if we didn't address it at the time. After the six months ended and the road was paved, we were then told by D P W that actually it can just be a condition of approval that we actually can, you know, go and do work on the roadway if needed. So that set us back quite a bit. That said, generally, the project benefits the neighborhood. It improves substantially a deteriorated property. It removes a large accessory structure, which is also in a state of disrepair. We're removing a portion of the residence that's constructed within the side yard setback, which extends up to the property line of 207 Hawthorne. And it also creates, as we mentioned already, an additional parking spot and dedicated trash area at the right of way. It also helps to break up the bulky rear-facing residences further up the hill and behind the residences as viewed from below. The major site constraints on this project, and it's a tough project, but the biggest ones, I really think, are that 30% slope of the lot, which reduced the F A R in half from 40% to 20%. Working with that was a challenge. We think we worked with it. And also the irregular shaped flag lot, not only is it a flag lot, as you can see, it's just it's very, it's a very awkward parcel. It'd be different if it was a little bit more square-like at the end of that dog leg or flagpole, but there's just a lot going on there. So there was a lot of constraints as far as the setbacks go. Since the staff report adequately adequately communicates the overall project details, I'm going to move on to addressing concerns brought forth in the staff report and by 207 Hawthorne. There appears to be three areas of concern. One is massing, another one's impact to the era heritage tree number six, the elm, and another is the potential view loss from 207 Hawthorne. I'd like to describe how we plan to address these areas in hopes that the planning commission deems them adequate compromises. I'm going to start with the impact to the heritage tree number six, the elm. As mentioned in the staff report, we would prefer that this tree remain and plan on taking all measures to ensure its health. And we understand the concerns from 207 Hawthorne related to its survival. That said, after considerations, we're willing to remove the eastern retaining wall and entry door at the lower level from the scope of work. This will result in no work or grading in that critical zone area. So all improvements would be within the existing building footprint by taking that out of the scope of work. It's also worth noting that the lower limbs likely would need to be trimmed for defensible fire space, even with the house as it exists. Even though the tree is clearly on the property of 207 Hawthorne, its limbs create both the risk of roof damage and increases gutter maintenance to 203 Hawthorne. We believe the loss of some of the low-hanging limbs won't be detrimental to the large tree's overall health now that there's no work being proposed in the critical root zone. Additionally, we have already lowered the overall roof height by two and a half feet based on feedback by Kristen and the staff during the completeness review process. That roof height change required modifications to the roof layout, pitch and window sizes. And you're kind of seeing the design now after that revision. In conjunction with eliminating elimination of the retaining wall and entry door, we do propose adding floor area at the lower level under the kitchen as suggested by the staff report. This area would also require direct exterior access on the south elevation. We believe these items combined are a satisfactory compromise to the concerns over the impact to that heritage tree number six. I think the next big item that we were talking about was in regards to massing. I want to talk a little bit first about one a particular item that came up, which is in regards to the stair roof. We understand that when requesting an F A R exception, the use of additional square footage is more heavily critiqued. And in hope that the small second level equivalency proposed would be viewed as a visually interesting element, but absolutely understand the staff report concern. That being said, we are willing to lower the stairwell roof approximately two and a half feet to match the main roof of the main ridge, basically, which would eliminate all second floor equivalency. This will address both bulk and views from 207 Hawthorne. Should be noted that until the recent black acacia tree was removed as part of the retaining wall work, you couldn't see the residents from the road. Even with the opening left by the removal of this tree, the stairwell element doesn't seem out of context to the buildings in the areas and especially buildings that are above. In addition to the bulk, other items with bulk, we disagree with the opinion that the project lacks notable modulation or offsets and is an architecturally vertical design. To the contrary, this is an overall horizontal design that uses an architecturally interesting vertical element to help break up the dominant horizontality of it. Architect articulation has been achieved in numerous areas throughout the use of staggered roof pitches, overhangs, plane changes and material surface changes. This is really prevalent on the southwest and east elevations. We also don't believe the staff report takes into consideration actual real-life use of the house. The south elevation is actually never ever seen head-on, even from the site or from the property below. I think that's 201 Hawthorne. Instead, the south and east elevations are only seen from an oblique view below. And both of those have several components of modulation and offset as shown again in southeast and west elevations. The stairwell element also helps to provide additional visual interest, but again, is only seen from an angle. Due to the building locations on 207 Hawthorne and 201 Hawthorne and several trees, the proposed design is relatively hidden from public view. Until the recent tree removal due to fire protection, the house was not visible from the road. And that can be confirmed via many online street views via Google Earth, et cetera. The house is just not visible until recently. 201 Hawthorne is not objected to the proposed design. And as stated in the staff report, there are no substantial views from the residents towards the proposed project. Additionally, there will be a retaining wall with a fence to minimize the structure's impact from below and to provide privacy. And just to note, that fence we're proposing, that actual fence would be a maximum of six feet high. It's just that on top of the retaining wall that maxes out at six, the overall structure at its highest, combined the wall and the fence, could be up to 12 feet. But the physical fence itself would only be six feet at its max. For reference, actually, let me move on. Actually, that's enough on that. The next one is actually the loss of view from 207 Hawthorne I wanted to address. Until last week, our past meetings with the owners revealed concern only about the potential impacts to the elm tree and their small partial view of Mount Tam on clear days. Views of King Mountain were not brought up as a concern. We have also offered the building elevations, which communicate the height difference between the existing residence and proposed. Oh, for reference, as a point of comparison, since we're talking about how much higher the the proposed structure is, as a point of comparison, the main ridge of the house has only increased by seven feet while going from a one-level home with storage below to a full two-level home. So it's only gone up by seven feet, even though we've created two levels of habitable area. We feel this is a modest increase in height and less substantial than noted. From the start of the project, compatibility with neighbors has been a priority and driven many decisions. Some of the examples of this are keeping the building in an area familiar to the neighbors as it's mostly in the same footprint, which minimizes the surprise of the location rather than locating the residence to the south to capture a small bay water view. In fact, the two eastern corners affecting 207 Hawthorne's view will not change or additionally obstruct the small partial Mount Tam view. We've also worked on minimizing glazing towards the east to provide privacy to 207 Hawthorne. And we preserve filtered views from properties above us by not removing the oak trees at the rear of the lot. There are two heritage oaks further up on the lot that were never an issue, but there's, I think, three or four non-heritage coast oaks behind the house. It should be noted that a substantial increase in height should be expected from even a modest redevelopment proposal as the irregular shape of this lot does not lend itself well towards a one-level residence due to the lot coverage and natural state requirements. Even a minor two-foot increase in the roof height would have contributed to significantly reduce the view of King Mountain from 207 Hawthorne and was shown on drawing several drawings previously. Additionally, by addressing the tree concern earlier and not impacting the critical root zone, the tree is preserved and leaves the existing privacy barrier between the two properties, which also helps in reducing the appearance of the proposed residence as viewed from the side of 207 Hawthorne. I'd like to note that none of the proposed improvements impact the substantial bay water views of 207 Hawthorne. We believe that lowering the stair roof, as mentioned in the earlier issue, also addresses this concern. There is also one final amendment, and it's the largest one that we're proposing. And it actually addresses all of those concerns that I've already gone over and is a quite large concession. We are willing to shift the building footprint northwest along the eastern setback line, five and a half feet to the west and five and a half feet to the north. This will further minimize lower limb loss to the heritage elm while expanding the view from 207, so actually expanding their view now from 207 Hawthorne to the west in the direction of Mount Tam and King Mountain, as well as reduce its presence from the roadway, also addressing bulk. We plan on working with the site's existing grade, which would result in maintaining existing building heights as proposed or actually may slightly decrease them since the structure will be slightly built into the hillside a little bit more. So that that those are addressing those main concerns. And just to recap them, because again, we're talking about a lot of things that couldn't I couldn't show you because they're full revisions, which I'm not allowed to present to you per se. So that's why I'm presenting them verbally. But those four amendments to recap are one, to remove the east retaining wall adjacent to heritage tree number six and the corresponding lower-level entry door and workshop, and therefore the grading related to it. You can see on the site plan and on the grading plan how much grading that would remove. The second is to add floor area to the ground level under the kitchen with exterior access to the south, similar to the floor area calculations that we currently have. Much of that would be 50% below, so calculated at 50%. The third item is to shift the location of the building, moving it to the northwest by five and a half feet and to the west, sorry, to the north and the west by five and a half, five and a half feet. And then finally, to lower the stairwell roof two feet, three inches so that it matches the main main roof ridge, which would also eliminate all of the second floor equivalency. To summarize, we're proposing solutions with substantial compromise and concession to each of the three areas of concern and requesting your consideration and deeming them minor amendments as conditions of approval in hopes that you might be able to make a motion on the project with the stated changes rather than a continuance, which would push us, I guess, easily into into January. Happy to try to answer any questions you have based on those proposed changes. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Do we have any questions for the applicant from the commission? Hearing none. Aaron, do you have, do you see any hands raised for comment from the public?
I I don't see any hands raised. I believe the homeowners are on the call. Did we want to hear from them?
Well, if they would like to speak, absolutely.
Julian or William, if you'd like to speak, you can unmute yourself.
Hello. Oh, yeah. My name is Gillian Schultz. I am one of the applicants. We bought this home three years ago thinking that we could just remodel. We thought we could, my brother lives in Puerto Madera, and we he bought a house that they they basically, it was a single-story house and we pumped it up. And so we talked to him and he thought, oh, yeah, you could probably do that with this. So we didn't know quite what we were getting into. We owned a pretty nice house in Sunnyvale. My husband, Bill, grew up in Larkspur, and his parents still live in Larkspur. They have health issues, so we're responsible for taking care of them. So we thought it was a win-win situation when we were able to move here. Plus, obviously, it's so beautiful. We just really felt it was amazing to live here. When we figured out, based on engineering reports, that the house was not really going to be able to be modified, it had to be torn down and rebuilt. We were a little bit shocked. We are fairly middle-class. We're both teachers. And we were very excited to live here. We know it's a very wealthy area with lots of people who move into the area with lots of money and ideas about what they want and don't want. We're not proposing a big project. We just want something that's comfortable for our home and for our daughter, who's eight. She attends the local elementary school. And we're willing to compromise with our neighbors. We have tried very hard with outreach to our neighbors to accommodate their comments and ideas. And we hope that we can move forward sooner than later because honestly, we've been in this process for two and a half years. We started the planning process two and a half years ago. And we initially thought we'd only been in the house for six months to a year before we started fixing it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Aaron, do you see any other hands raised?
Yes, we have Ben from the public with the hand raised.
Yes, so if he could identify himself and perhaps state where he lives.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Ben Parsons. I live with my wife at 207 Hawthorne. We are the people who wrote the letter. And we know Bill and Jill pretty well. And we we moved in about 18 months ago. Have known them since they moved in. And we met Chris, their architect, a couple of times. They they did, they've done a great job at, you know, including us in their process. They had us over to their house to look at their plans a little while ago. And then we most recently, I mentioned this in the letter, but they we most recently had them over our house once the story polls went up to kind of show them, you know, what we were seeing from our perspective. I think we're super supportive generally of them, of Bill and Jill building their house. I think there are a couple of concerns we have, and we try to, you know, come up with some ideas, I guess, in the letter that we wrote and included some pictures. So hopefully it was pretty clear. You know, I think we we totally get like the the lot configurations crazy complicated. And, you know, talking to Bill and Jill over the time since we've been living here, you know, I understand it's like it's an incredibly frustrating process. And there's a lot of constraints that you got to deal with. So I think we we want to just be super clear about our concerns, you know, and make ourselves available to answer any questions. I think, you know, hearing some of the concessions that Chris described were super helpful. You know, the elm tree is a big focus for us, given it creates such a good screening effect between our two properties. And, you know, the the view is important to us. We spend a lot of time, it's kind of a view from our kitchen in our main living area. And, you know, this is maybe too personal, I guess, but Mount Tam has kind of a special spot in my wife and my heart just because we got engaged up there. So, you know, everybody loves Mount Tam. We especially especially love it. But anyhow, you know, I know it's it's kind of late. So hopefully, our letter was clear. We're we're super available to be working constructively with Bill, Jill and Chris. And, you know, it's it's hard for me to react, I guess, to the five-foot slide proposal. Not that it's it's my decision ultimately anyway. But, you know, I can't tell what kind of effect that would have necessarily without, you know, seeing plans and studying it a little bit. But and then, you know, I guess, last point is I generally don't appreciate people who, you know, complain and then don't come up with any ideas. So our letter was maybe too long because of it, but we tried to come up with some ideas that they may take into consideration about house ground or making some. That's it. I think we, again, super supportive of the project generally, just have have some concerns about the current. You know, I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions if that's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Aaron, are there any other hands raised?
Looks like Chris Schrader has raised his hand again.
Okay, let's give him. Okay, let's give the floor back to Chris.
Okay, you should you should be able to unmute yourself.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to step back in and just be clear with with Ben, just to make sure that he understood the alterations that we made. Both in response to the staff report and their letter, which on a couple items overlapped with each other. So we've actually addressed every issue that they brought up, every concern. With those four items that we've presented today. So just wanted to be to be clear, then we understand that he provided some sketches en massing issues that were favorable to his property. Which we did take a look at it and we had started that process and it was determined that we could achieve. Working on these concerns and giving these concessions by those four elements that we presented today. I don't need to Google back over them, but in regards to the tree, the location of the house. And the height of the south elevation. Just wanted to be clear of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Aaron, does anyone else wish to speak?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. And Jeff, tag, you're it.
Boy, this is complex. I would like to know the history of how this lot was subdivided like this. Because I suspect it was one big lot that they subdivided a long time ago. To have that kind of flagpole thing, that's just a really complex lot and kudos to. The architect, Mr. Schrader, for for doing what I think is a really beautiful design. I think that, given a lot of the conversation tonight. And really excellent presentations by the architect and an amazing presentation by Mr. Parson. And reading his letter, I think that he's given a blueprint for the homeowners and the architect to modify their design. A little bit and we were presented with some of that tonight. I think to make findings, though. Would be difficult for me right now without being able to see them. And I also think that, given the absence of more expert commissioners like Mr. Wagstaff. Who's an actual architect, as opposed to me, an anesthesiologist. Would be helpful because I'm finding myself a little confused about, you know, what the new structure would look like with some of these proposed. Things and I think they are nearly there. They just need to present it to us as a finalized thing. And I really feel very sorry for Jill. I understand that it's going to be a little bit more of a weight and I apologize for that. But I think that it's hard for me to make findings for it, given that at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Natasha, can I move it on to you, please?
Yes, thank you. And I do agree with Jeff and everything he just said. I do. This was a, this is a great kind of project and complicated project and I can see it's just very challenging. And it's great that the applicants are taking this on. And I would love to, you know, be able to make this path smoother for them. I really would. And I think the presentation from the architects, which was very helpful. I'm in the same boat as Jeffrey is I would need to actually, I think, see the plans. It sounds like they're sincerely addressing all the issues that have been raised in the staff report as well as in the letter from the neighbor. But not being an architect myself, I can't tell exactly. Whether or not they meet the findings. So I'm sort of in the same situation. So I don't know what the most efficient way forward is to avoid a continuance and to try and. Sort of review the plans, but I don't know if that's even possible. It sounds like we may have to do that. I don't know whether in this meeting, though, we can we can approve. I think that there were a couple of items that didn't really have many issues, like the variance on the parking. And the fence height exception permit. Can we address those or does it need to be addressed at all at once?
Usually we'll make the we'll make the findings as as one whole. As opposed to subdividing them into their into their various components. So that's that's usually, I understand your question, but that's usually the process that we that we follow. So even if there are some items which are not controversial or with in which with which we are in agreement. Nonetheless, as a single application, the application gets improved in its entirety.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, was there anything else you want to add, Natasha?
Was there anything else? No. You know, I had a random question, though, is. What is, how are they addressing the clipped corner? There's one corner that goes into the setback and it seems to be just sliced on on the plans. I don't know if I was reading that correctly. Are they just putting a line through the property there? So that, yeah, there, can you see? Oh. Is, how are they addressing?
They're just making the building conform to that setback.
Yep.
Is that okay? So they're literally just cutting the corner off.
Yeah, I mean, it's really creative. It's an amazing creative piece of work. And boy, I have to say, what a talented architect to have done this, but. That's why I'd like to see the, and I'm sorry to step on you, Natasha, but I'd like to do the whole thing in its revised thing, which I understand. Why Mr. Schrader wanted a continuance because it needs a continuance for us to see that.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. So I'll just add my two cents, which aren't going to be terribly different from the from the four cents that you've already heard. Which is, it's 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 virtually impossible for us and for me in particular to make the findings. On on an application which essentially is different from the application that we have in front of us. And, you know, and I understand, and I really, 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 none of us really wants to add to the to the burden facing the applicant. I know they're anxious to get their home constructed and move on with their lives and we definitely have the thought for that. But we're simply not in a position to 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 make the findings for plans that we really don't have at this point. I know that, you know, that Mr. Schrader, that in his view, the the modifications are. More in the nature of tweaks than than a redesign. But nonetheless, what we're what we're seeing is not what we're getting. And as a result, we sort of need to see what we're going to get before we actually make those findings. Definitely definitely appreciate the work that's being done amongst neighbors. It's very, very helpful and I think in the in the long run, that will that will serve everybody's interests. Both the applicant and and the Parsons at two oh seven, at two oh seven Hawthorne. So, yeah, so I would I would be in favor of the continuance. We generally, we generally ask the applicant whether they would. They would prefer another solution by such as a denial, which they could then, which they could then appeal to the. To the city council. But in in this particular case, I'm not quite sure how that would work since since they are going to propose a somewhat different design. So with that. Could I ask one of my fellow commissioners to make a motion? I'm presuming a motion for continuance.
It's my turn, I guess. So I make a motion for continuance of this project until a revision of the plans to represent it would actually will. Be proposed is done.
And I can second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So.
Is this a, sorry, this is a director. Is this a is this a continuance to a date uncertain?
Well, actually, I was going to ask you what you think is the is the most workable in this case. If the if the applicant has a date in mind. I guess it would be to date uncertain. I would certainly ask inquire whether the applicant has a date in mind. At which at which he thinks that a new application could be presented or a new design could be presented.
Chris, Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Perfect. First, thank you guys for all the comments. We worked really hard on the design and I appreciate your comments about the overall design. So thank you for that. And we actually had, I mean, I asked if we could, you know, make a motion on this. We went in this knowing that most likely it was going to be a continuance. We had to make these moves and these revisions, but since we weren't able to physically give the hand them over, since that's not allowed, it had to be all be done verbally. So I wish I have them on my computer, but I'm not actually allowed to show them to you. So we will be working as quickly as we can to show you the actual drawings. They're still somewhat in process. That being said, it's I earlier in the meeting, you guys mentioned how you're trying to combine, I think, your next meetings into. The fifteenth possibly. If that's the case, I guess it just depends on if you're going to try to consolidate into the fifteenth or if you're going to try to do the eighth and then cancel the twenty second. I don't know, maybe more discussion has to happen. I would like to say I could be ready for the fifteenth. But I think a lot of it just depends on what you guys decide regarding other applications.
I also want to point out that the plans have to be internally consistent, so we would need the civil plan to be revised to show the changes. Because right now, they propose excavating up to the. East side property line and they're talking about eliminating grading there and potentially doing grading elsewhere and shifting the house. So we do need the plan to be internally consistent. We can't have the two different designs in one set that we approve.
Absolutely, yes. All all of the different corresponding drawings would be updated and all the consultants would update their drawings as well.
So Neil and Kristen, is there any jeopardy to the applicant in making this a continuance to a date uncertain?
No, I mean, I really think it's probably a matter of they can, the sooner they can get the drawings in, the sooner we can review and get it back to hearing. So it would be on them. I think we'd be too aggressive. Trying to get it right to the next meeting, but we will certainly process it as expediently as possible. Once we get sort of a complete. Set of revisions back to Kristen.
And that's fine. That's adequate. I mean, we are dealing with consultants who are already leaving on holiday and everybody's got funny schedules right now. So I'll do my best to round up everybody and get this new set taken in for review. But I agree, it's kind of uncertain at this point, so.
Okay, we'll do we'll do date uncertain with that with that understanding in mind.
Thank you.
Can I ask a design question? If they shift the building to the west, that would free them up to fill in that clipped corner some. Does anyone have any objection to that option?
Well, I guess I'll react first and ask, you know, Natasha and Jeff to, you know, to chime in. I have. Right, right now, I would not, I can't foresee an objection specifically. Of course, I do, again, you know, we do want to see the plans, but but. A priori, I would have no objection.
And am I still on?
Yes.
So we are proposing not only moving to the west, but to the northwest. So the same condition will still be there. It'll just be pushed further up along the eastern property line. We would have to push even further over to the west only and we would be sacrificing more space to the other side of the house, which we would like to have a deck on. And I personally think it's a visually interesting aspect, so.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think that it's a it's a, what's it, they say it's a it's a feature, not a bug. In the design to have that. It's architecturally interesting to me.
Okay, I I think we're done and we'll note that the the motion is for a continuance to a date uncertain.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Since this is a continuance, there's no there's no appeal provision. So thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to to business items, the first of which is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November tenth.
Could I make a motion for approval of the minutes for the meeting of November tenth?
I can second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's that's three in favor and the two other commissioners are just being absent. Also, please note that in our, in the motion that we just passed about the continuance, that two members were absent, Commissioner, Chair Talber. And and Vice Chair Wagstaff. And the next business item would be the planning commissioner's reports. Are there any? I am hearing none, so I will assume that there are none. And I believe that will lead us to our final motion, which would be to adjourn for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Sorry if that call came through under my laptop. I don't know if you could hear that.
So we do have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, none opposed and Chair Talber and Vice Chair Wagstaff absent this evening. Thank you very much. And with that, that was my gavel.
Nice job.
Hey, thank you.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Thanksgiving.